Is everybody here?
I don't see JC or Sarah yet.
Dave? I don't know what I did wrong now. Honey, I pressed a button and the whole screen went away from me. I'm back on something.
People are probably still able to hear you.
Okay, there's JC. Now we're just seeing Sarah.
Hello?
I'm on the phone with Sarah. We're trying to get her hooked up.
Everybody could make. Are we going to feedback here?
That sounded like a horror film.
Good news is if we only have to do this, we're probably about another year.
You're good.
Okay, cool. All right.
Okay, she opened multiple sessions of Zoom and that was causing the feedback. Things should be okay now.
Okay. All right, is everybody here now? Sarah?
Is Sarah on the phone?
Commissioner Burling, yes, she's on the phone.
All right.
She's gonna be calling. This is, hello, this is Leslie. She's gonna be calling in in a second. I'm on the phone with.
Okay.
Okay. She gets started right after all.
Hello, thanks.
Hopefully Sarah's calling in now.
Leslie, do you recognize your number?
I was just getting, I was just in meeting. That's Sarah, or the one before it was Sarah. So she should be on the line.
Okay, Sarah, are you on the line? Okay, how about?
Okay, can you, can you hear me now?
Yeah, can hear you.
Okay.
Okay, we'll call the meeting to order then. And this is my first time doing this, so you guys are all gonna bear with me, right? Doing the best I can. Meeting's called to order of the Forrester Beach Commission for Thursday, February 11th, 2021. And I guess our first business is roll call.
Sarah Burling.
Yes.
Michael Cadell.
Yes.
Darlene Mosley.
Yes.
D.C. Myers.
Yes.
Brian Sowers.
Yes.
Okay, and if you can all just remember to mute yourself when you're not talking, we appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. The next order is public appearances. Members of the public are entitled to speak on matters of municipal concern, not on the agenda during public appearances. Each person's comment shall be limited to three minutes or as otherwise established by the commission. Matters not appearing on commissioner's agenda will not receive action at this meeting but may be referred to staff for a future meeting. Persons are not required to give their names, but it is helpful, helpful for speakers to state their names so that they may be identified in the minutes of the meeting. So we're open for public appearances. Does anybody want to make a public appearance?
That's a first.
That's a first? Do you think that's waiting long enough?
Yes.
Call in, okay. Having no public appearances for today, next item is any announcements anyone wants to make?
I'd like to introduce our new director of community planning and building. It's Brandon Swanson. Brandon, you wanna, there we are. Wave and say hello.
Hi, everybody. Brandon Swanson here. I did get to meet a couple of you on the site visit a couple of weeks ago, back for the project here tonight, but for those that I haven't met yet, it's good to meet you. I've been in the area for about 16 years, just across the hill in Pacific Grove. So I'm excited to be part of the team in Carmel and looking forward to working with everybody. So thank you very much, Bob.
Thank you, Brandon.
Thank you, Brandon. Any other announcements? All right, so we move into the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are routine in nature and do not require discussion or independent action. Members of the commission or the public may ask that any items be considered individually for purposes of commission discussion and/or public comment unless this is done. One motion may be used to adopt all recommended actions. So the first, do we, do I go through the list of the first? Do we just?
Right, if you read up the first item.
The first item is to approve the minutes from the January 14th, 2021 meeting.
And it's one item.
Tour of inspection as presented.
And if I may, you were gonna change the January 26th from JC Meyer to Darlene?
I did that, yes.
That's already done.
Yes, already done.
Okay, thank you. No other comments.
Okay, can we accept the consent agenda items then?
A motion to approve both the meeting minutes and the tour of inspection as presented.
Got a motion, I'll second it.
All right, can we have a roll call then?
Burling. Sarah? I think you might be muted, Sarah. We'll come back. Cadell.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Sarah Burling.
Here. So, yes, whatever.
Michael Cadell.
Yes.
D.C. Myers.
Yes.
Brian Sowers.
Yes.
Darlene Mosley.
Yes.
Approved, thank you.
Hey. The next item on our agenda is public hearings. And this is the approval or denial with or without conditions of the tree removal permit application of 23 trees on 16 parcels South First Avenue between Carpenter Street and Guadalupe Street.
And I think the city forester will need a staff presentation.
Thank you.
Yes. Thanks, everybody. So just to recap from our last meeting, we did look at a concept plan for the 16 parcel development. We reviewed an application for tree removal. Since then, we've visited the site as a commission and observed some of the trees proposed for removal or for retention as a group. And the developer has come back with a new proposal. So currently, that would be to remove 23 trees. So that would be the trees that were found to be not significant and includes the four trees that should be removed because they're in poor health or deceased. So if we would like to go ahead and show you the, the map again, this is a new updated site plan. So as you can see, compared to the one that we were previously shown, the trees that were in good health and good form on the eight residential parcels now have been retained and some of the structures have been redesigned to accommodate their structural root zones. So this is color coordinated, so you can tell which species they're proposing to remove as well as the two red Xs that would be trees that it's recommended we recoup in lieu of fee since the building footprint really couldn't be changed to accommodate those two trees. So after all of this being said, if we wanted to go back to the table of how the numbers break down, I apologize for the junkiness. So the tree, the, the site initially begins with 71 trees. There are 14 in the public right of way to be protected. Three trees have already been removed from the public right of way by the city for poor health. So that leaves 54 trees on the private property. And then they're proposed to remove 23 trees, which I recommend that we should remove. So that would leave 31 trees to be retained on the 16 parcels. So that would be that we would retain on the private property and right of way together, 45 trees. So with the new trees that are proposed to stay, not be removed like before, if we go off of the density for recommended tree plantings per 4,000 foot square, square foot parcel, that would mean that we would recommend for 57 new trees be planted. So at the end of the day, if the 23 removals are approved and the number of recommended trees be planted, that would mean that the site would come away with 113 total trees, which would be a net increase based on what is there now.
Sarah, can I interrupt for just one second? The table you have up on the screen is from the prior report. Numbers are not lining up. I think because you attached the prior report.
Oh, yep, you're right.
Back to the first one and go through those numbers again, because
Here it is.
We're all getting confused. There you go.
I was reading the right page. So 71 on the site, 14 in the right of way, three in the right of way already removed. So that's 54 on the private property. 23 are proposed to be removed, which I agree with and recommend the approval. That means we would be retaining 33, 31 trees on the private property. So with that, private and the right of way, that would be 45 trees. So based on density recommendations, less the trees to be retained, that would be requesting 57 trees be planted. So that would give a net gain to the property of the number of trees that would be there of 42 new trees. All right. So does, does any, does, do I need to clarify anything or does anyone have any questions?
Madam Chairman, this is Mike Cadell. Could I ask a couple of questions? Sarah, I, I can't follow your math. So if you, if you look back at your chart, as I understand it, 45 is the number of trees, including the trees you recommend be retained, plus the trees in the right of way, right?
Yes.
So if you add 57 new trees to that, that's not 113, that's 102, right?
Let's check here. Okay, ask the question one more time?
Okay, if you, if you, unless I'm missing something, you've got 45 trees that are, that are, the trees that are retained on the property plus the trees that are in the public right of way. So that's 45 total, correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay, then you're recommending the addition, additional planting of 57 trees, which would leave you with a total of 102 trees, not 113.
Oh.
That is correct. That, that was a carryover from the last, last one.
Yes, 101. So that would give us a gain of 71. So that would be 31 new trees.
100 trees, right.
Okay, okay. So we're still gonna see, you know, a net increase of more than 30 trees and will we still at 102 trees meet the density goal?
So, yes or no? So if we're looking at the individual parcels as being 4,000 square feet, then that would be three upper canopy trees and one lower canopy tree per single family structure. So yes, but the commission itself, once the lot increases to over 8,000 square feet, that is determined by the commission. So to make the discussion kind of apples to apples, I was looking at adding the aggregate of eight of the parcels that are going to be merged for the resort to having the same density as the residential parcels. So the commission has the leeway to request more or less in terms of density for the, the resort portion of, of the development.
Okay, okay, but we're still, I mean, the big, the big picture takeaway is we're actually gonna see a net increase of more than 30 trees on the property.
If, if, if you follow the recommendation that I made.
Right. And, and you feel comfortable with the allocation of the new trees between upper canopy and, and mid or lower canopy?
I think that that's a lot of trees. And to provide adequate space for them all to grow, we would need to be very creative. That might involve creating some planting spaces in the proposed parking lot as well as potentially adding some more trees into the public right of way.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions?
Sarah, this is to you, Sarah. This is Brian. We, so when we did our site visit, we had identified a couple of trees that we were thinking we might keep versus remove. And I don't, asking your plan, so is that a decision we have to make today or not?
Um, yeah, so I'm gonna go back to the motion that we have to get all the right tree numbers together here. I think our conversation was mostly around tree number four and also the two on the interior, 25 and 24. So I am still recommending that we remove tree number four to allow for tree number three to have more growing space since it is a pine and a more desirable species. So I'm recommending that we allow number four to be removed. And then to have the developer do mitigation for trees number 24 and number 25. Did that clarify that?
Well, I mean, I guess I was, so I thought when we looked at four, we thought that that was a, a good sized tree that, that and that the pine was probably in more declining health than the acacia, but I mean, I don't know, I'd look to the other members of the council to address that.
Yes, you're more than welcome to discuss that now that we're having a session.
JC?
All right, thanks. For Forester Sarah, just back to the question regards to the recommendation for the eight merged lots that you're recommending an equivalent of the 4,000 square foot recommendation. So that's 32 trees. And is that combination recommendation, is that the same in terms of three upper and one lower, or are you making a different recommendation? I know to what Commissioner Cadell's question was and, and obviously your statement that the lot itself is gonna be difficult to perhaps put so many trees. Are you making a recommendation at this point in terms of upper and lower? Is that a necessity at this point? Yeah, I guess that's it.
Now, that's, that's an aggregate number. I didn't split them out in, into half, you know, which upper versus which lower. I was going tree for tree.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the commission?
Wiki, I dare you.
Can you hear me now? Yes? Seeing no other questions?
Madam Chair, you may want to ask the applicant if they have any comments.
That's exactly where I was going. Thank you. If the applicant has anything they want to add in a public appearance, that's fine. Now would be the time. So Sarah, do you think no one from this application is gonna be here to speak or should we wait longer or?
They were provided with the call in number and they were aware of when the hearing was to take place. So they, they, they've been made aware and have acknowledged that they received the information.
Okay, so having no public comment, is it time for us to bring it back to the commission and make a discussion about what kind of motions we might make on this?
I think you want to open it up to the public for comment, right? That was just.
Other public.
Right.
Okay, is there anyone from the public that wants to make comment on this in a public appearance?
Boy, this is like, this is like COVID fatigue, isn't it?
It is.
I can't believe nobody, wow.
You can't say people are out watching the AT&amp;T.
No, they're not.
First of all, Mike, but boy, Darlene, these things are moving right along.
Hey, let's keep it this way. Let's, let's have no problems, all right? So having no comment coming from the public, it's time to get back to the commission for discussion and possible determinations on what we're doing about this agenda.
Madam Chair? Um, since I submitted the report, a concept arose that perhaps we, the commission might want to consider making the approval of the removal permit application contingent on some sort of approval from the planning commission prior to issuance.
And, and I think that's right. I think what I was gonna say about this whole issue was there were those two trees that they really want to take out because of the foundation issues, but those were two really nice trees when we went on our inspection. And so I was wondering if we said, I didn't know where we were going with this. If we said, no, we don't want those trees to come out, then they would appeal that to city council anyway, but we really don't have a building plan at, as far as I know, at the planning commission yet. So I don't know. I don't know what to say about any particular tree or if we just move forward with our foresters' recommendation and see what happens when it goes to planning, but then does it ever come back to us if they're taking out significant trees that we might want to have a say about? Yes.
If I, if I may, a couple of comments on that, and Brandon and Marnie are here to help us through this. First of all, I wouldn't, I wouldn't allow them to remove any trees until they go through the entitlement process and get a building permit. So we don't want those trees cut down and then something goes wrong or delays and we have a hole in the ground for a year and a half or something. So that'd be a recommendation. Also.
Bob, could you just reword that one more time? You said the tree removal without entitlement process and the building permit, is that correct?
All right, they shouldn't be cutting down the trees until later on when they're getting close to going forward with the building.
Thank you.
Right, so we don't, we don't have a bunch of cut trees and then the developer goes away and, and we have a bunch of trees on the ground. Also in terms of a, the process is that this would not come back to the Forrester Beach Commission unless the planning commission recommended it. And it could basically, you know, if the planning commission has some redesign concepts, which might allow us to keep certain trees and remove other trees, then this could possibly come back. If the plan, it goes exactly as the concept plan shows, which is a slim chance, but if it goes exactly per plan, then this commission would not see those, those piece plans again. Is that right, Brandon? Close enough?
Bob, you're hired. You're, you're gonna come over and work in the planning department.
Oh, God forbid.
Yeah.
I tell you what, he's trying to hire everybody.
Would we, that's right.
When we, that's right. When, when we take this forward to the planning commission, we'll be putting conditions of approval on there like you see in other projects. And those conditions will require, you know, the specific trees be removed, um, not, not until they get the permits. Uh, the replantings will be required as, as conditions of approval. But Bob's correct, if there's any modifications to the plan, uh, other than what this commission has approved, then it will likely be referred back here for another look. And I do, I do believe I saw a note that the applicant would like to speak. I think they may have come in late or something like that.
Okay, would the applicant like to speak?
Marnie, I, I saw your note. Did you, did you get a, something from the applicant saying they wanted to speak?
I did, um, and they might be having trouble with the mute, the, the mute button.
So if you're on a phone to unmute yourself, you hit star six. So if you, if you're an applicant and you're on the phone, please hit star six and you can unmute yourself.
Hi, can you hear me now?
There we go.
Yes.
Okay, so we were just trying to unmute from our phone and it wasn't working. We have followed the entire, um, uh, discussion and, um, you know, we're fine with that. Uh, twenty-four and twenty-five were the key trees. And I'm going to go ahead and identify myself, Eric Miller, architect. But, and so we also concur with, um, not removing the trees until we have approval. Um, and, uh, are ready to pull the building permit. But I did have one thought, uh, if some of the trees decline in the meantime and become dangerous, uh, I think we should have, uh, the ability to go back to the forester and approach her about removing sooner. So that's really the only, uh, the only, um, uh, thought I had with that, so. You guys still there?
Yeah, we're here.
Okay, uh, and with that, if you have any questions, um, I'm happy to answer.
I'm having just as much.
I'm sorry?
Darling, you muted yourself.
When you muted, unmute darling, just give it a second before you touch the button again. You're still muted. Are there any questions from other commissioners?
I think I figured it out, thank you. Any other questions from the commission? Nope. Are we ready to make some sort of motion?
Well, I think you still want to close that and bring it back to discussion of, of the commissioners.
I think that's where I was, but perfect.
And then, so I just, I, I wanted to circle back to Brian's point. I remember the discussion of the acacia and the pine. And I think I thought that at the end of the day, we concluded that, uh, and I know Sarah's recommendation, City Forester's recommendation is that we take out the acacia, keep the pine because the pine is a more signature tree. But I agree with you, Brian, that it's, it, the pine does not look great. But there was a hope, I think, that the pine would, uh, recover and, and perhaps, uh, you know, be revitalized by the removal of the acacia. And then I think J C and I, and I think Brian, you came over too. When we walked down the street a little bit and looked back, you could see that the pine actually did provide. I mean, there was, there was a part of it that was quite healthy and, um, looked pretty big. And, and the only other comment I have is, other than, um, I would accept the city foresters' recommendation. I was going to make the same point, that as I recalled, there were some trees that were in a, uh, advanced state of decline. And so we, we, we could easily move to accept the city foresters' recommendation with the two provisos that one, uh, no trees are removed until the plan has been approved and a permit been issued by the city. Um, except with respect to any trees that appear to be, um, have declined to the point where they present a safety hazard. And at that point, the city forester would have the authority to okay their immediate removal.
J C?
Yeah, thank you. I, I, um, also, um, I, I do recall looking at, uh, tree number four from a couple of different angles. In fact, after our meeting, I went to the backside of the property as well. A couple of days later, I went, um, up the hill to look back down and, and try to visualize with, without that tree specifically. And, uh, um, I, I've come to the conclusion, from my perspective anyway, that removing that tree would actually be a, a benefit for that pine. And ultimately, I think, uh, uh, benefit for the property. I just want to comment that I, that I think the, um, I think the forester has been very creative here. Um, with, uh, and I think intentional to keep the, a, a nice density, um, on this, uh, big development piece. And, um, with an increase of, uh, it looks like about thirty-plus percent of trees on the property when it's all said and done. Um, I think that's a testament to our commitment to the, to the city and, and our desire to see trees planted. So hats off to Sarah.
Anybody else?
It, it, am I, am I, am I on?
Yes.
Am I on or am I muted?
Yes, you're on.
Okay, so, uh, as far, can I go ahead?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, so as, as far as the motion goes, I, I don't think we need to put in that if a tree is not healthy, the, uh, forester would decide to, um, take it down. I mean, she's going to decide that whether we have it in our motion or not, because that's one of her responsibilities. So I would leave that out. Is anyone there?
Yes.
Yeah, Sarah, that makes sense. So I'll, I'll, I'll make that motion then, that we accept the city foresters' recommendation. Uh, as to the handling of this permit, uh, with the proviso that none of the trees, um, at issue will be removed until the city planning department has completed its process and issued a permit.
Yeah.
I'll second that.
Yeah.
Can we have a roll call?
I'm sorry, who seconded?
I did.
J C.
Okay. Burling.
Yes.
Cadell.
That's good news.
Yes.
Myers.
Yep.
Howard.
No.
Mosley.
Yes.
Approved, thank you.
Okay.
Wow, should have, should have made Darlene chairman a long time ago.
It just had to, just had to be easy.
We're just rocketing along here.
I believe, I believe Michael, you're talking out of order. Would you please let Darlene?
Probably their biggest application.
Oh, no, let, let, love it, love it. Um, needed an easy entree into this because, anyway, um, orders of business. Um, orders of business are agenda items that require city council, board of commission, discussion, debate, direction. Are we already there? Yeah, we're there.
Yes, we are.
Integrated pest management policy.
With our city forester, but also Anyas Martelais, our environmental compliance manager, who's on the screen here. Gosh, uh, she and the forester will be making a joint presentation because they're both responsible for putting this plan together, the policy together as well as implementing it. So over to Sarah.
I can, I can show my screen if you want, Sarah.
Or do you want me to share my screen?
I can share it, it's fine.
How does that, how does that work? Can everyone see it?
Yep.
Okay. There you go, Anyas.
All right, uh, hold on. This thing just, okay, never mind. Uh, so we are here to discuss a proposed integrated pest management policy. So to give you a little bit of background, uh, the city currently has an unwritten policy, uh, that we don't use any pesticides. However, there have been special cases where we've used them safely and effectively in very specific cases. So for example, uh, when we have a wasp nest that is, uh, causing particular danger to public safety, uh, we, uh, we have used pesticides to remove those. Um, also in the treatment of invasive tree stumps of the Michigan Trail National Reserve as part of a restoration project in locations inaccessible for stump riding, we would apply, uh, pesticide, uh, on the stump itself to prevent regrowth of eucalyptus or, uh, acacia trees that are very aggressive trees that will regrow from stump and create entirely new trees. We've also used it in the treatment of invasive ice plant at the North Dunes for habitat restoration purposes. Um, because, uh, that pesticides are used in, you know, in those rare occasions, we do need a systematic approach so that we ensure proper oversight and tracking so that, um, for, you know, for the public knowledge and also so that we stay in compliance, uh, with our regulations. Next slide. Uh, Sarah, you're muted.
So when we use the term pesticide, that's an umbrella term for lots of different substances. So by definition, a pesticide is something that prevents, destroys, propels, or mitigates a pest. Um, so a pest can be, um, an animal, invertebrate or vertebrate. It also can be an algae, a protozoan, an insect, uh, a weed. So anything that's basically a pest, something that you don't want, um, i- i- is what we're trying to, um, deal with. So some other terms you may have heard of are herbicides. Those would be pesticides for plants, insecticides, insects, fungicides for fungus, al- algicides for algae, rodent sides would be your, your rat killers, um, for, uh, go for control, that sort of thing. And there's also other antimicrobials and things like that that still fall under this term of pesticide. And all of these substances are, uh, regulated by the federal and state governments. And, um, many of them require, um, a license from the state to be able to purchase and to apply. So integrated pest management is a very systematic way to approach when you decide if you need to, um, use a pesticide. And the goals of these policies really are about, um, creating awareness of the decision-making process that happens before the use of a, of a pesticide. It also, um, ensures that we're being effective and we're keeping health risks to the public, our staff, and the environment as low as possible. It also really creates a transparency to what the city is doing, um, through documentation and that sort of thing. So it's a way for the community to hold us accountable. All right, so the, the steps are pretty easy. Anyas, did you want to take this one or do you want me to keep going?
You can keep going if you want.
Great, so the first step in the decision-making progress is kind of to decide what your problem is, where it is, and how big is it, and if there are any naturally occurring, um, any population, so a predator or a parasitoid. Um, then you have to identify what's contributing to the pest problem. Or do you have more of one type of weed because you're overwatering or underwatering? Is there something that we're doing that's causing the pest to occur? Are, um, you know, do we have raccoons because we have open trash cans? You know, what is it that's really contributing to the problem? And then we have to determine, um, what's our threshold for that pest? At what point do we decide this is enough? We're not willing to try anymore. We need to bring in a substance to control this pest. And that threshold can be determined biologically, aesthetically, or based on economic, um, damage that's caused by the pest. So we have to decide where our threshold is. And then, once our pest problem reaches that threshold, we need to choose the most appropriate, uh, treatment strategy. So is our threshold something that's, you know, pretty high? And we want to try something that's as least damaging as possible first? Or is our threshold very low and we want to move into using a pesticide soon? So Anyas?
So once we reach the threshold, actually, there's still a number of decisions that, um, need to be made before we go to using a pesticide. So first, we start by evaluating our non-pesticide strategies. Uh, physical controls, uh, we're going to continue to prioritize any physical controls. So hand-polling, mowing weeds, uh, improving sanitation, uh, installing barriers. There are various different controls that we might be able to use. Uh, we also want to create landscape, the landscapes that encourage, um, insect parasites and predators that might help control our pest problems. Uh, we also, so if, if those, uh, more, uh, natural controls just aren't managing the population enough, then, uh, we would move to deciding on the pesticide that it has the least toxicity, uh, but that is still effective on, um, on the pest. Uh, and then we want to apply the pesticide at the most effective time and, um, in the most effective manner to affect the pest while also minimizing impacts to stormwater runoff, other non-target organisms, and the environment in general. Next slide, there we go. Oh, you're muted, Sarah.
I do that because I don't want to have feedback. And so this is an example of how this thought press, process works through. So let's say we have a tree and it has aphids on it. Well, aphids are little tiny insects that pierce and suck the sap out of a plant's leaf. And as a result, that nice sugary substance comes out the other side of the aphid and drips down onto the surfaces underneath of it. So if you're parked under a tree that has lots of aphids, you'll end up with a sticky car with this kind of sooty mold that will feed on all of that sugar. It's kind of unpleasant, it's a little bit gross, but it doesn't really hurt your car or anything like that. So in this case, we might move into something that's pretty low-key. We might look at going to the nursery and buying a bag of lady beetles and releasing those as predators. Because they eat the aphids as well as their larval stage also eat the aphids. So that might be one control for the aphids that reduces the problem we have of that honeydew. Also, we might think about doing something even simpler is getting out the garden hose and blowing the aphids off of the leaves themselves, which is pretty effective as well. Um, you know, it, they might come back, you know, you just have to keep doing it. But then let's think about instead of this being over our car, what if this tree with this pest is over the seating area of your restaurant? And now your diners are getting dripped on with sticky stuff all of the time. And your clientele reduces because nobody wants to sit at your tables and get sticky. In this case, your threshold for that pest could be at a different place than if it was just affecting your car. Now it's affecting your bottom line. So in this case, your threshold is at a different place, and you might choose to go with a pesticide solution much sooner because it's at a different level. So is everyone kind of feeling where we're going with how this all works? Okay, got a thumbs up from J C, who's in agriculture, so that's good, all right. Okay, Anya?
Yeah, so I'll add that the other thing that's important with integrated pest management is there is, uh, more data tracking than what we have done in the past. Uh, we have, we would use a chemical use reporting form, and there is a requirement that we submit monthly summary, uh, summary pesticide use reports to state Cal Act permits, which is actually managed, um, and overseen, uh, by Monterey, Monterey County, keeps track of those, uh, locally. And, uh, for any months where our staff applies any pesticides outdoor. If a con- if a contractor applies pesticides, then they are required to submit those permits. But if a city staff would, uh, apply pesticide, then, then we are required to submit those permits. Uh, I will also add that, uh, the state stormwater permit requires us to keep track of our pesticide uses on public properties, uh, and I, uh, include it in our annual report every year. There's also a lot of staff training involved in IPM so that it is conducted properly and following all of our procedures. Uh, you're muted, Sarah.
I'm trying to be so good. So, um, what does that mean for our procedures here in Carmel? So we're choosing to stay away from the most toxic and corrosive pesticides in category one. Um, but the IPM coordinator within the city will be required to approve any applications. Um, will verify that our applicators are, are done by a certified applicator with a state license. Um, and that the, um, if the pesticides are used, they're going to be used when they're going to be the most effective. Um, we're also going to pay very close attention to any non-targeted, uh, vegetation or pests that could be affected by what we choose to use through, through drift or that sort of thing. And very best management practice is n- nothing gets sprayed when there's wind or if it's damp or foggy or rainy or in extreme heat. Um, you know, more is not more with pesticides. You know, more is less with pesticides. So paying very close attention to formulations and making sure everything is exactly dialed in to the s- the s- the safest ratios at all possible. And of course, we would never use anything that wasn't approved by the state as well as not applying anything, um, within a hundred feet of our riparian areas. That is very cleared out, uh, spelled out in our, uh, city ordinance. So with that, you know, this is always my favorite topic to talk about is, you know, pesticides. The fastest way to glaze people's eyes over is start talking about bugs. So with that, do we have any, well, wait, we have safety procedures? Sorry, Anya, I'm sorry, I hit the safety procedures.
Uh, yeah, so safety pro- procedures. We, uh, PPE, uh, personal protective equipment is required, uh, you know, as, as directed by pesticide label. Uh, or, you know, we might even be more, um, uh, conservative in those cases and just to make sure everybody's safe. Um, also, uh, the pest applicator would have to be, um, when using pesticides, would have to have pesticide label with, um, the MSDS sheet, the material safety data sheet, which, uh, outlines, you know, everything regarding the chemicals in the pesticide, its potential, uh, toxicity, uh, any kind of, um, emergency measures. Uh, so that, all that is spelled out. Um, and they would also have the medical emergency contact information in case of an emergency. Uh, and all of our pesticide containers have to be properly labeled, much like all the rest of our chemicals at the Public Works Department. They are all properly labeled, um, uh, to ensure that our staff is safe and they are stored in the right locations. And finally, um, I'll just add that the integrated pest management procedure, um, in addition to, you know, being, we think, a good way for the city to operate, it's also recommended bars- by our state water quality control board.
So now, any questions?
Sarah, this is Brian. Um, that's a really nice procedure document you guys have put together. I just got a quick question on, so this is specific to just cities' use of pesticides.
No, Dusty.
You cut out a little bit, what I read the question was, is that this policy is specific only to pesticides, correct?
And it's just the city's use of pesticides, correct?
Yes, just the city operation, so this wouldn't apply to individual property owner.
So is it, do any cities require certain, this is a question, uh, require like outside contractors that come in and you work for residents to have any kind of quality control over the pesticides that are used on private property?
Yes, typically that's governed by the state, um, through the, the licensing process, but there are municipalities around the nation that have restricted specific, um, chemicals from being used.
Just to clarify, if the city hires a contractor for any landscaping that works, our contractor would have to, uh, abide by the same regulations?
But essentially, if I'm a resident, I could hire anyone or use any chemical I want, subject to state regulations?
Uh, no, there are specific chemicals that you cannot purchase unless you have a license. So anything that's available to opt the shelf and say a hardware store, you can purchase and use, but you still are restricted to the instructions on the label. Um, even though there's everyone there, um, watch you do it.
I swear. J C?
Thanks. Uh, just a, a, a point of order. When asking questions and you're done asking a question, put yourself back on mute so while the response is happening and everybody else has all the feedback of that, uh, response. Um, I don't know if this is directed to Sarah or to Anya, I'm not sure, but, um, in terms of this chain of command, this IPM coordinator, who's that going to be? Have you guys identified that person? Don't have the answer yet. And then when you said there's a lot of staff training, is that staff training basically to turn staff into scouts? For those that are out looking for different pests? And then their job is going to become to report back to the IPM coordinator who will then, I want to make sure I understand this, who then, if it's determined after all the other, uh, decision-making steps, um, that application is needed, then the city is going to hire out a certified applicator? It's not going to be something done by the, by a city employee? That's my question, correct?
So correct me if I'm wrong, Anya, but I believe in the policy, we identified the forester as the coordinator, correct? Okay, so that will be news.
Yes, that's right.
Um, in terms of hiring things out, we have a state licensed applicator on staff. So if we need to, we can do that ourselves. And in terms of training, it's really about, um, material handling. So if we have any spills, that sort of thing. And in some cases, certain applications can be made under the supervision of a licensed applicator. So in those cases, there would be training of those individuals that could work essentially under someone else's license. So it would be around PPE, um, you know, spills, that sort of thing.
Thanks.
But if I may, I just want to interject. We don't, we don't anticipate using a lot of pesticides in the first place. So the, the quantity of incidents here is pretty slim.
Mike, Michael, did you have a comment that you wanted to make? No? All right, thank you very much for the presentation.
I'm sure you may want to call the comments.
I might want to, sorry?
You might want to open up the public comments, even though there's.
Public comments, thank you. Are there any public comments? No?
That was easy.
Public comments? All right. Um, so we'll move on to the city foresters' monthly report.
If I, if I may, uh, Madam Chair, um, we are going to be taking this policy to the city council in the next couple of meetings. If we can get us, uh, consent or, or a sense from your commission of support for this policy, we'll, we'll tell the council what you viewed by the commission and support it. Or you could, you could have us come back with some revisions. We're, we're open to suggestions.
I don't know, so, so do we make a statement here? Is that what you're?
You could make a motion.
Justing?
Yeah.
That we, um,
Or.
that we were presented with a policy and that we support it?
Right.
It, it wouldn't, I think it would be more in the nature of a resolution than a motion, perhaps. I'm not sure there's a big difference, but.
It would be a resolution by council, but I don't think the commission does resolutions, or it certainly hasn't since I've been around.
Well, I think you were saying you just, you're going to present it to city council and you want to be able to say that you made the presentation and that the commission supported it?
That's correct. Or, that's our best-case scenario for, for today.
I'd like to make a motion that we have been presented with the integrated pest management program and that, uh, the commission, we support it.
I'll second that.
All right, can we have a vote then?
I, I'm just going to state, there's nothing to really vote on because Bob can just go to the, you're just providing feedback. So now he can go back to the council and say, this, the commission supports this without, because he's, no one's asking you to make a vote on anything. You're just providing feedback.
This is my question.
Well, but I, but I think as a practical matter, uh, then if there's no vote, you need to at least give anyone an opportunity who does not support this to say so on the record.
So.
Okay.
So let's have it on the record and have a vote. Just have it. Can we do that?
I guess I'll just ask everybody if they support it because there's nothing we're really voting on, but, okay.
Okay. Is everyone supported?
Uh, I support it.
Okay. Darlene Mosley.
I support it.
Michael Cadell.
Yes, I support it.
J C Myers.
Yes.
Brian Sowers.
Yes, I support it.
Okay, everybody supports it, thank you.
All right, now can we have the, um, monthly foresters' report, Sarah?
Look, I unmuted myself.
What?
Don't say that, that's not funny. Um, all right, so recap for January. Right at the end of the month, we had, um, what I perceive as our first, uh, big storm. So, uh, over the twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth, staff worked overnight to keep the streets clear, um, so our emergency vehicles could get around if they needed to. Um, so overall, we had about twenty, twenty different trees that dropped limbs, and we had, um, eight trees altogether fall. But three of those were little trees that just needed to be restaked. So it wasn't very, very dramatic. Um, the, the largest one was a pine tree that toppled at San Carlos and Second that was involved with a power line. There was another at, um, on Monteverde between Fourth and Third that fell into the street. Both the pine and the oak, uh, were, were root failures. Um, it was pretty interesting. Um, those were the biggest ones. Um, and then we're continuing on with keeping up with our inventory. Hitchcanker is flaring up around town. You might see quite a few of the larger pines starting to turn brown in patchy areas and then very quickly turn brown all over. Um, if, if you want us to see what this looks like, just drive up and down Unipro a couple of times and, and you'll really start to notice it. So that's a pathogen that's been in the area for a while, and, um, it really affects the trees that have been stressed. So those that aren't doing so well from the last drought cycle. So we're working to, um, get those cleaned up as well as we can. There's also quite a few on Ocean Avenue that are much smaller that we're trying to, um, take, take out sooner than later as well. Um, in January, I did not have any stop work orders. Um, code enforcement had one that was related to trees, and that was the Davis Price case at Unipro and Thirteenth that we've already heard about. Um, and our Carmel Cares activities, um, uh, were suspended for the month of January because of the shelter-in-place, um, orders. So we had a little bit of fun going on with our graphs. You can see what, um, what we worked on, um, in terms of, uh, uh, permits, uh, this last January. So I added a couple more columns just so you can, um, see the discrete numbers a little bit more so you can see the actual properties that already meet the density recommendations. So I couldn't require them to plant, uh, more trees. And that's reflected in the next table as well. So, um, I thought that just provides a little bit more information about why some trees weren't required. So this last month, it wasn't because, um, there wasn't room. It's just their density had already been met. Um, there were, uh, three trees that came out in a development site that were permitted, but, um, we don't know yet how many new trees will be required until we, um, take a look at the landscape plan. So there will be new trees added, they'll just be in a different month. Um, our historic permitted removals and replanting. For two thousand and twenty, we're conducting an audit right now of all of the permits just to make sure that these numbers actually line up and are, are tightened up, uh, oftentimes with the, um, the development sites. Sometimes the removals are permitted in one year, but then the trees don't get planted until another year. So I just want to go back over two thousand and twenty and, and make sure that these numbers are as close as, as we can get them. Um, then our replanting of upwards and lowers, not a very dramatic graph considering we only have one month of data under our belt. And, um, we did a lot more pruning this last month than, um, we typically do, and that's mostly because of the storm event. So, and we have started to plant our new trees for, uh, two thousand and twenty-one. So our, our, our new graph is, is underway. So hopefully this year, our, our removals can come in lower than last year, um, if hitchcanker cooperates and we'll be able to increase our trees pruned and increase our trees planted. Um, so that's the bulk of the foresters' report. Is there, um, are there any questions that I can answer for you? J C has a question.
Thanks, I just have a quick question. Um, only because on, uh, in my neighborhood, uh, one of my neighbors asked this, so I'm asking it. When the city takes a tree down and quarters it and leaves it on the side of the road, or not on the road, but did it kind of leave it in the bushes area? Um, is it meant for someone just to come by, whoever feels like it, and pick it up and take it with them? Um, is it meant for someone just to come by, whoever feels like it, and pick it up and take it with them if they want? Or is it just waiting for somebody else to come along and actually retrieve it and take it back to wherever you guys take it?
Yeah, so, um, during the bulk of the event, we were getting things on the ground and then coming back to clean them up. Um, we didn't leave lots of big logs. Um, if you're seeing large logs, they're most likely from PG&E and those are ones that we need to come back and pick up as well. So if we've missed anything, um, let us know and we can swing back by and, and clean up any piles of logs.
Okay, thanks. I think that they just wanted to take them home, but I said, I think you're supposed to just let the city come back and take it.
Yeah, I mean, if, if somebody else wants to pick it up, it's just less work that we have to do and it's, it's, it's firewood. I would encourage though that, um, none of our pine or oak material is moved outside of the county. Um, we are in the oak quarantine for sudden oak death, so no oak material is supposed to leave Monterey County.
Sarah, I have a question pertaining to that. Can oak material come into our county? Like if you ordered firewood from outside of the county, let's say? Yes? Okay. Okay, any other questions for Sarah on her, um, forestry report for the month? And if not, we can hear from the wonderful Public Works Department.
Did you want to open up to public comments or questions to the forester about her report?
Oh, sure, sorry. Anyone from the public want to speak about Sarah's report or ask Sarah questions? Is, are they allowed to?
I don't think we have anyone else on the line.
Pretty much all 13 of us are there.
I don't know, there aren't a lot of stakeholders out there today.
What did Commissioner Cal call it, um, COVID blues?
I can't wait till we get back in a room with everybody, so I, I'm just barely figuring out this stinking computer. Anyway, um, if you'd like to give us your wonderful public works report.
All right, well, thank you very much. Okay, first go through some city council actions that have anything to do with forest, tree, parks and beach issues, not much. There was an update on the mid-year city budget. We have, you know, uh, through the end of December, we went halfway through our budget. And the re, the revenue projections back effective July 1st for this fiscal year uh, was, uh, ran off to 19 million and we were going to use 1 million of the, uh, of the city savings accounts. That's, uh, roughly $20 million. And our expenditures were cut 20, 30% to go down to that same $20 million. The good news is that our expenditures are pretty much right on track, at least I hope so for public workers. And, but we're getting a little bit more revenue than we had estimated, uh, a million, billion and a half higher. That's good news. Um, we're still, we're still afloat, although it's, it was a, a big impact on our current budget. Um, also, just, uh, so you hear it from me first, um, Forest Theater, um, is being proposed to, we're, we're going to send out a request for proposal for a company to do the theatrical programming and the facility maintenance, which includes all the landscape maintenance, building maintenance, the whole nine yards. Um, so that would, um, uh, relieve, uh, city staff on having to, uh, to work down there. And there's a lot of, a lot of repairs are needed there. So anyway, we're hoping that we get a very qualified firm or consortium of people to take over that facility. So currently it's being run by Sunset Center, but they're having their own, uh, their own issues of being able to maintain that. So that's all I have for the city council meeting. For the climate committee meeting of, of January the 21st, and since Anya's still here, I'll ask her to, uh, tell us about the presentations that was heard.
Um, so at the January meeting, we heard from a great presentation from the Monterey Regional Waste Management District on some of their practices and projects to reduce their greenhouse gas emissions. And we heard from the Monterey Peninsula, uh, Water Management District on the resilience of the water system to climate change. Uh, I think they were both very informative presentations and, uh, we'll use some of the, the feedback from both of them in, in our, in our planning process.
Any questions so far? Seeing an update on volunteer organizations as City Forests had that there was, uh, you know, when we were sheltered in place, there wasn't much going on in the field anyway. But things are picking up steam again now that the shelter place has been lifted. Um, I think Sarah, I'm not sure if she got it yet, but she's going to be getting a nice new chainsaw from Carmel Cares. Um, scenic pathway, they're still doing their thing, um, you know, pruning and cleaning up. And, um, so that's going well. The median minder program where people adopt a median that's near their homes. Picking up steam, we're getting more and more people to, uh, pursue that. Devon Dorf Park's going to be just starting out to do like a, a fairly large renovation. There's 26 little mini projects. They're working on the first two projects now, which includes, um, putting up the egg mappas, whatever that means, and, um, wrapping some down in Sunset Center. And we're going to be spreading some more chips. We're going to be fixing the benches that are broken. Carmel Cares identified a project manager for that site. If you recall, I think we talked about having Shirley Moon as the project manager for the scenic pathway renovation. And, uh, New Jersey Cynthia Vandenberg, who's the project manager for Devon Dorf Park. So it's, it's, the momentum's picking up and it's going to be great to get really a lot of, a lot of help to boost the quality of that park. Um, we're also talking to Carmel Cares about putting split rail fencing where it's missing around the edge of Forest Hill Park. So that's, we'll give you more information when that comes to fruition. I think that's it for volunteer organizations. And I, any questions on that? Seeing none last, but at least miscellaneous parks and beach and, and related public works items. Um, the commission meeting last month of Vivian Price, Dr. Price was the one that had, had the three trees removed and the commission imposed a penalty for two of the three trees for $4,700. Let's do a landscape plan and to do a, um, a tree maintenance plan, tree management plan. So that will be appealed. That will be heard by the city council on March the 2nd. Uh, she submitted a letter, which is very similar to the letter she submitted to the commission. So it's kind of, almost be a redo. Just let you be aware of that. Um, we're purchasing some goodies for, under the ADA, American with Disabilities Act program that affects parks. We're going to be putting in ADA compliant toilet partitions in the restrooms at Devon Dorf Park. That's always fun. Get rid of the ones that are all beat up and non-ADA compliant and have graffiti and all that. So replacing that and we're getting a new fountain, ADA compliant fountain at Piccadilly Park. So a couple of little pieces of upgrades for some of our parks. Um, nature trails, nature preserve. Uh, we're going to replace the ugly garbage can with a bear saver, the, or the big new cans, which is nice. Um, the Friends of Mission Trails are working on some IV removal. And I believe Anya's and Sarah are working with the contractors moving five acacia trees. I'm not sure if they're done, but I know the work is underway. And in March, the city, we're asking the city council to accept $4,000 grant from the, uh, Water Management District for a rain garden in front of City Hall. We tried to get that project started about a year, a year ago, and then COVID hit, so we've kind of been delayed a lot. But now, now that we have a, a funding source, it'll be even a nicer design than we had, um, which we had initially planned. And we, we have a little quandary about the tennis courts up by Forest Hill Park. So right now we have the two tennis courts. The people who play tennis, the, the nets are set for the height where you play tennis. But pickleball use, I'm not making this problem up. The pickleball people have to lower the net by two inches to play pickleball. So the string on our nets are tearing our net and, uh, not helping, it, it's not helping. The, there were, there were, um, cranks, there were cranks on these side poles that were stolen somewhere along the way. So we can buy new, uh, side cranks, but we don't want to have them stolen because they will be stolen and used elsewhere. Um, so we're kind of undecided if we should leave it as it is and let them fight it out until the nets break and then we'll, uh, ask Carmel Cares for a donation if they want to do that. Or we could have one court, a tennis court and one court, a pickleball court that will piss off half the population. If we, if we have both at the tennis court height, we'll, we'll piss off half the population. And if we do it at the tennis height, we piss off half the population. So there's absolutely a no win situation. What we don't want to do is have our facility maintenance person at, in the middle of a weekend have to come out and, and hand them cranks to adjust the, the net. So if any of you have any suggestions?
Bob?
Yes.
Sarah Burling, what about just getting the pickleball nets, uh, two of them? Because you can have two on one court, uh, you know, half court each and put in the markers for picklebar, uh, pickleball court in blue so it doesn't get in the way of the tennis ones. And then they can just, and the, the, uh, nets can be kept against the fence until the pickleball people want to put them up where they go. That's, that's actually the way they have them at the Mission Mansion, a couple of other places. It's, and, and Pebble Beach has that also.
That's awesome. Let me call you offline, Sarah, get some more details on that.
Okay.
Appreciate the input. That's, that's great.
Okay.
And J.C. was considering a, I don't want to put you on the spot, J.C., but if you wanted to mention something nice, uh, about sand on the beach or anything, this is an opportunity. But we can leave it unsaid for now. No pressure.
It's fine. We're, uh, after our last meeting and the discussions around the cost of the overall, the overarching issue of sand accretion, uh, I did approach the volleyball community that obviously I'm a part of and was able to secure a donation that will come just in under $2,500 that will be presented to the city administration, um, for specifically for, um, sand movement and then also protection of the, at least temporary protection anyway of the, of the Delmar Hill until long, longer term solutions can be made. So, yeah, that's, uh, I, I did let Bob know about that and, uh, we're excited as a community to support what goes on down on the beach, obviously.
And we appreciate all contributions and the volunteer efforts as well, of course. That's all I have, Chair.
Bob, a couple of questions, this is Brian.
Sure.
So I'm a tennis player. So one of the things I know you're going to have an issue with those, with the nets for the pickleball deal because they'll get swollen, but one of the ideas might be is to secure handles to those, um, those nets by locking them in somehow, whether you solder them down onto the handle and so someone can't rip them off unless they have a, a capability to cut them off.
Is that a question?
No, it's a, it's a solution.
Okay.
That way, I mean, someone's not going to be able to take those handles off if you secure them on by soldering them on or welding them, welding them down.
We, we did look at that and, uh, we talked to a, uh, a so-called expert vendor who specializes in nothing, believe it or not, but we can either look.
The other question I had for you is I'm part of the project team on the pathway with Carmel Cares.
Good.
And I know on the, the North Doom project, there's been a lot of stuff that hasn't been hauled away there. And I know the Carmel Cares team can come together and help with some of this removal. If that's necessary, I mean, I, I live up in that area that, of the beach area, so it is kind of, and I, if there was a possibility for us to roll, even get rid of some of that in a quicker basis, we can talk on that.
Yeah, Sarah?
Do you mean up by the North Dunes?
Yes.
Yeah, we're scheduled to take the chipper out on Tuesday and clean that all up.
Okay. Okay, any other questions?
Okay, are we done?
Uh, do we need to open this up to?
Yes, you do need to open up for any public comments. Thank you, J.C. J.C. is eager to be the chair.
That is not true.
You got a.
Sorry, I, my computer decides to turn on and turn off whenever it wants to and I, I'm not in charge. That's it. Anyway, does the public have any questions for Rob? No? Thank you?
Then you have free chair.
Anybody? Okay, so, um, I need to ask for future agenda items? Yes? Is this where we come up with things we might want to put on?
Now's the time.
Now's the time. J.C.?
I will just comment again. I made this the last, the, in the last, in the last meeting that I really feel like as a commission, this is one of our duties to, um, find ways to communicate with the public about things that are taking place. And so I would encourage each one of us as commissioners to spend this next month just looking around, not only in our own community, but outside of our community for other ways in which the city is communicating with its residents. And, uh, and then perhaps we can, uh, bring those things back and, and have a discussion about what, what ways that we could go forward, um, doing that. And, uh, I just, I think it is something that is part of our, that is part of our charge and that it would, it would make sense that we, um, at least made an effort to do it. That's it.
Thank you. Anybody else have anything?
This is Brian again. Just on that avenue, I mean, just because I would, that I'm part of the Carmel Cares team now down the side path down. We've had a lot of really good feedback on the Carmel Cares stuff, CarmelCares.org. And had very, um, kind of resident oriented, um, feedback about what's going on and a pretty good communication channel that I think they've been able to open up. And it's pretty easy and very thoughtful about what they're doing. And I'm not sure that the city's website does is maybe careful communications, uh, message that CarmelCares.org tends to send. I don't know if there's a way, look at theirs, it's an opportunity to maybe evaluate how the city builds their web portal to communicate with the residents versus what Carmel Cares is kind of doing. And they've had a fairly, I will say a very, maybe it's because of their being out in the public viewpoint, they've had a really good resident, um, uh, donate, uh, capability. You know, I don't know whether that, I mean, that does feed into the city more or less. Um, but how can we better do whatever we're doing as, as a forest and beach commission to enhance that resident giving to projects that maybe they get a visibility to that they can't see from the city? It gets communicated by Carmel Cares or an airport or two. I don't know. They seem to be very, very successful with getting residents to donate significant sums of money for things that the city just doesn't either have the time nor the money or budget to proceed forward with.
Certainly agree. Uh, on the Carmel Cares website, it, it, it's, it is stellar. It's a top notch job. We were, so we did our comments to individuals in development. It is a good website. Um, we refer to it in some of our Friday letters, uh, or, and or on our website. I think maybe what a future agenda top item could be is for us to enhance the forestry-related portion of the website as opposed to worrying about the entire city website, which is a, a large onerous project in itself. But we can, we can focus down on, uh, you know, specific items in there that can enhance. But we can, we can focus down on, you know, specific items in there that can enhance communication with the public.
That's great, Bob.
Thanks, Bob. So J C, just saw a little clarification. You're talking about getting communications out to residents about things happening, maybe within our commission that they might not be aware of, making them more informed about what's going on and.
Oh, no, not so much our commission per se, more along the lines of what's happening within the forestry piece. Things that like, for instance, when Sarah, our forester says pitch canker is flaring up. Like it'd be a really great way for us to figure out a way to communicate that a little more effectively to our residents in some form or fashion. I don't know what that is. That's why I just suggested that we all.
And the reason I ask that is there's, Carmel Residents Association also has a newsletter plus the member that's running our communication board, the news you can use pretty regularly and puts things out there. And there, the CRA is also trying to get board members involved in all of the different commissions and going to city council meetings, forest and beach commission, the historical commissions, activities, and then reporting back so that we can let residents know what's going on. And I think that, that this would be something that could also work.
Yeah, it's a great tie in. They're really good with their Facebook communications and of course the newsletter that goes out. So they're an example. And that's what I mean. We need to bring those examples back. And perhaps we can find ways to generate some information that's specific to what, what we're up to, or at least what our, the forest and beach is up to. Yeah, anyway, it's just a future agenda item, so.
Okay. Anything else for now? Well, Ben, I think we can adjourn this meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I'll just write in the bits. Have a good month. Bye.
Bye. Thank you.
Thanks. Bye.